Reunion of the Planning Board is now open. A couple of things. First, one of our members is not here tonight, but she's here on the speakerphone that's right there in front of our town planner, so she'll be participating in the hearing and by voting also. And tonight, their Planning Board reorganization will have motion on that. So I think we'll begin with that. Pat?
Do you want to move it to the end?
Yes, let us move it to the end.
Okay. I move that we take the Planning Board reorganization out of order and put it at the end of the public meetings.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so we've moved that, so now we'll open, as we usually do, with public comment. Is there anyone here to speak on an issue that's not on the agenda? Something that isn't there, but you want to talk about? No, this is a chance to review the procedure. If you are going to speak, when you speak, please go to the podium and speak into the microphone. That actually connects you, not to us, but to FCTV, so that the people at home can hear you. There are cameras around, and it's being televised, and that's the way they can hear you, and this is the way they can hear us. These are not actually microphones that let you hear us any better. We have to keep remembering to raise our voices, and I apologize for when I forget to do that. If you're going to go to the podium, please give your name and the issue you're going to be talking about. So if there's no public comment, we can move forward.
Minutes.
Yeah. Oh, minutes from the last meeting?
I recommend approval of the minutes of May 9th, 2023, as corrected.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes approved. Okay, first thing on our agenda tonight. Oh, Pam. Sorry. You approve. That's okay by you. All right, good. That was good practice. Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Okay, so, approval not required is the first thing that we have. The applicant, this is new to us, the applicant is the Woods Hole Land Holding LLC, and they're asking for a plan of land to subdivide the property to create two parcels located 81 Technology Park Drive. Who will be speaking on that?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Jeff Nickerson. I'm an attorney here in town, speaking on behalf of Woods Hole Land Holdings, which is the property owner for 81 Technology Park Drive. The manager and member of Woods Hole Land Holdings, David Aubrey, is here with me this evening. Also here is Chief Robert Farullo, the Executive Director of Municipal Police Training Committee, and Austin Chardier from Mackenzie Engineering, who developed this plan. We're submitting this A&R in furtherance of the development of 81 Technology Park Drive. Presently, there's an existing building on the site, as you can see on the plan, and the proposal is this A&R to create a new lot on the back. It's an L shape in the northeast side of the plan, and that is where we propose to add a new building to be the municipal police training facility. Parcel A, which is going to be the location of the existing building, as you see in the front, is going to be 2.56 acres. That's right here. And Parcel B, in the back here, is going to be 3.09 acres. The A&R plan as submitted qualifies for endorsement as an approval-not-required plan, and we ask that you vote for that endorsement tonight. To secure endorsement for an A&R, the applicant has to show that the lots are shown on a way. We have to show that the lots have the minimum frontage requirements in the zoning district, and that the lots have vital access. Technology Park Drive, which is shown on the plan, has been in existence for quite some time. It serves as a means of access to several parcels and buildings in the area. Technology Park, as you know, was probably developed in the mid-'90s, so it's been there for quite a while. The minimum frontage requirement in this district by zoning is 100 feet linear. We have 200 feet shown for each parcel, 200 for parcel for the, for, I'm sorry, 200 for Parcel B, and for Parcel A, we have 222. So we meet those requirements. In terms of vital access, again, as I've said, it's a very well-developed road. It's been there for quite some time. We believe that, meeting those three criteria, the plan should be one that would be appropriate for the board to endorse. As I mentioned, Austin Chardier is here with any information that the board might have as to specifics on the plan, but in light of Mr. Farullo attending, I would ask if Mr. Farullo might be able to speak on behalf of the municipal police training facility in his interest in seeing this project move forward.
For it now.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the council. My name is Robert Farullo. I'm a retired police chief from the city of Woburn. I currently work for the Executive Office of Public Safety in the Healy-Driscoll administration, where I'm responsible for police training of the 23,000 police officers across the Commonwealth. I operate 18 police academies, further southwest being Holyoke, and up until two years ago, the furthest east being On Base here at Joint Base Cape Cod. My job is to provide three types of training: basic recruit training, statutorily mandated continuing education, and then specialized training, where we certify offices in certain topics. I have a budget of $17.9 million, and I report directly to the Cabinet Secretary of Public Safety, Secretary Terrence Reedy. For years, the Cape has been woefully underserved with an opportunity to, where to train their police officers. We tried to make a project work on Joint Base Cape Cod that Barnstable County was paying for. That went fiscally, totally sideways. We lose money training costs. I lose about $170,000 per recruit class that I run. Barnstable County went into this thinking it was going to be a profitable organization. It wasn't. So I am trying to pick up with that project went sideways. So we went through the process with Department of Capital Asset Management. We searched from, not literally, but figuratively, from Peetown to the bridges, and the best place we came up with is on Technology Drive. If I could have one more wide minute, and then I'll focus right in on the building. We have not run a police academy for two years on Cape, so the offices that currently serve your communities in the Vineyard are driving to Plymouth is the closest, Randolph is second closest, and we currently have a group that started yesterday in Linfield, where you have offices driving from here to Linfield, Massachusetts for training, or getting an apartment or hotel up there. I just drove from Linfield to get here. It was 2 hours and 20 minutes at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. That's what these kids do every day. Our intent of this building is to be an off-season facility. We're going to be open year-round. I'll have staff there year-round, but we're not going to train during the summer. It's quite clear, and the chiefs have made it quite clear, they want us to start training in October, November, finish by May, and then be gone. We have all fresh, new-faced young police officers, police officers, to serve the Cape and the Vineyard and Nantucket. So we've missed two cycles of that already. They're driving far distances. The mission of this is to primarily support police training or public safety training for the Cape and for the Vineyard. This particular location will allow folks from the Vineyard to actually commute. They can take the ferry, they can get to the class, go to class, get back to the ferry, either by transportation we'll provide, by Uber, or by, if the parking lot is open, they could take the bus to the parking lot and walk to the police academy, as how close it is. Then get back on the ferry, go back to their families. Currently, if you want to go to a class, you have to come over, drive to Plymouth, stay in a hotel at Plymouth, and go. So the intent is to serve the Cape. We will have one class of 50 to 60 people. They will go in the morning, 6:30, 7 o'clock, they will start. They will not leave the building until 4 o'clock in the afternoon. No local daytime traffic for that particular function. Where I really am excited about this, to provide support to the local communities, is there'll be other real police officers that are there for continuing education or certification classes, 20, 30, 40, 50 a day, that will provide and drive business to the local community off-season. Will come alive in October, will go away in May, but they'll, Dunkin' Donuts, gas stations, restaurants, sandwich shops, convenience stores, they'll be the ones that can get there in the morning with their coffee, go into a classroom like a grown adult, and then go out for lunch, come back from lunch, get gas on the way home. The recruits are stuck in the building. They bring their sandwich in their bag, they eat when they're told to eat, they play when they're told to play, they do what they're told to do. So in my mind, I envision this as not in the way during the summertime, and will do whatever. More importantly than that, every place we have operated, Linfield, and I can provide contacts to the town manager in Linfield, the mayor of Holyoke, the town manager in Randolph, where I currently open, operate three brand-new facilities, just like what I'm trying to do here, but bigger. We want to be part of the community. There's going to be a 4,000-plus-and-minus-square-foot workout room. We want to make that available to the community. Saturday morning aerobic classes, I'll give somebody the passcode to the building. If the little kids need a place to play kickball in the wintertime, we'll give them the building to do. This honorable counsel needs to meet, to do CPR training, to have a bigger meeting for a project, you can have full access to my facility, the classrooms, whatever you need, we want to become part of the community. The middle school has a field day at the end of the year. My student officers will support that field day, to the extent that people want to do it, to really embed ourselves into the community. We have the support of the chiefs, you know, we have the support of the folks in my world to come here. I just want to earn the support of the community. Chief Dunn and I go back years. I was a police officer for 38 years. I was a chief for seven. I met him professionally. We're not personal friends. Chief Fredrickson, you know, I have a relationship with him. They can speak to the mission of what I'm doing across the state, but our job is to become part of the community. Whatever you need, we will do to become embedded in the community. We don't want money. We don't want anything. We just want to become part of this world. My biggest successes I have are the three that I've opened since I've been in this position, and I've opened three in the last 18 months. So from the beginning to the end, it's less than two years for me to have a project. Linfield is 65,000 square feet, Randolph's about 45,000 square feet, and Holyoke's about 55,000 square feet. This is going to be much smaller, around half that size, because we only, we have a very targeted audience to take care of your police officers. I think I covered all of my points, but I'm more than willing to take questions, comments, concerns. We're a unique, it's a unique opportunity.
Are there any comments from the board or questions? Paul?
A comment. I like the idea very much, because I'm in very much in favor of trying to develop more of the area in Tech Park. I mean, there's a lot of undeveloped areas there. I think it's very important. I just have a brief question of interest. How many people participate in these programs at one time, and how long are these programs? Are they daily, weekly?
Student offices, the recruit academy, which is what the primary mission is here, is 23 weeks, and we would serve-
23 weeks?
23 weeks, Monday through Friday, commuting, because we, you know, except for, you know, Province Town, it, you know, it's an hour, an hour-and-a-half commute, just even on Cape to do it. But it'll be 23 weeks, and they'll be there Monday through Friday, very rarely at night. Like, sometimes at night, they would come in because they need darkness to practice search and cars in the dock, but that'd be, that'd be 23 weeks. The veteran officers would be there Monday through Thursday, maybe 10 or 12 weeks a year. You take the number of offices in the Cape and maybe a little bit off Cape, but we have the same facility in Plymouth. So there's not, it's not like we're going to get people far and wide here. It's going to serve just the way south on the other side of the bridge, and then the Cape and Vineyard and, you know, Nantucket. I haven't quite figured out an easy solution for them yet, but we're there just to serve this community. There will be others. Like, if Plymouth Police Academy's full, and they have offices, it's not unreasonable for them to come here. And the group would be 40 to 60 people at a time. The classrooms don't hold, they will not hold more than that, and there are no divisible walls. In all my other facilities, I built dividing walls, so I can push the other facilities up to 100 if I need be, but I want this to be focused on just supporting the Cape. Thank you.
I move endorsement of the A&R with no discussion regarding buildability of the lot.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? I have something I did want to make. I was really startled by your statistic. We can have a discussion now after the motion-
We usually don't discuss A&Rs, but go ahead.
23,000 local police for a population of over 6 million.
That's not just local police. That includes the Massachusetts State Police, environmental police, the entire campus policing. But yeah, 23,000 is a number.
Interesting. Okay. Then, the motion's been made. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It's a great proposal. It really will be good for the community. And Pam?
All in favor?
Pam?
Aye.
On the TV.
Are you with us?
She said aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And thank you, both.
Yeah. Good luck with it.
Just wanted to thank you, good to see you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Now, next on our agenda, a continuing public hearing. This is the public hearing concerning Mr. Glasos' project at 545, is that the number? I just think so. 545 Main Street. Melinda, is he bringing it up? Right, and Jed, is there anything you want to say first about this?
No, just that, you know, there's two items on the agenda. You have a special permit hearing, which is still open. That's for parking within five feet of the property line. You also have a site plan review. I developed-
Had merged them together at the last time, because what's good is one without the other.
Right. I would suggest you just continue the hearing, unless, of course, there's things that the public wants to add, but I did provide a list of outstanding items that we had been carrying forward throughout this process.
Yes.
According to our department, there's just that one, one item left, which is the shared parking agreement.
Well, I'm sure you shared the list with the others that are here, and after each item, it's saying resolve, resolve, resolve. It's the parking that we're looking at.
It is simply the parking.
Maybe it might not be. Let's, Mr. Arment, did you want to speak on this project?
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the boards, and congratulations to the three reappointed members in the election. I haven't seen the memo, but Jed reported correctly. I believe we have resolved all the outstanding issues except for one, which is parking. We have ongoing discussions with the church, all the way up to the bishop and their attorney, and I don't know if it has to go from the bishop to the cardinal, then to the Pope in Rome, but we're slowly making some progress. We have engaged Mr. Arment to help with that process, and also, he has an interesting proposal I'd like you to hear tonight on our project. So unless you have any other questions for me, I think we've made some good progress over the last few weeks. We would like to request an extension until we do get the parking resolved, and I think that two weeks or your first meeting next month should give us adequate time. The, Mr. Arment reported to me this evening that he had a conversation with the church's attorney, and they're in the process of setting up a meeting with our assessor's office, which basically caused this whole issue. But that aside, they're trying to meet with them and get some resolution on the concerns that they have.
Well, this is all good news. You're in good hands, and it sounds like it's moving forward. It's not as stuck as it was, so that's good, and we're looking forward to hearing this interesting thought.
And you'll have a written request for an extension, right, to us?
Yes.
I mean, verbally fine. That's fine, but we need it in writing.
An email is fine.
Yeah, we'll, I'll go an email.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Arment?
Michael asked for our help last week, so we're sort of new to this project, and we've reviewed most of what's been done, but not everything. It did occur to, to me that there might be a better way to have this project approved, and I discussed it with Jed a bit on Friday and sent him a letter about it yesterday. So Jed, I don't know if you've shared the correspondence that I sent with-
We have not. Staff's still reviewing and formulating a response.
Well, I sort of apologize for making a presentation Michael asked me to do. I think it helps us to move things forward if I, if I continue that. That's okay.
I would say that's up to the chair.
I'd like to hear it. I think we all would.
Maybe the easiest thing would be, because I think it was very well-written, is for me to read the letter that I sent to Jed. It really covers everything. It says that 545 Main Street has proposed 71 commercial accommodation units. Site plan review is pending, and a ZBA special permit is required for commercial accommodations. Commercial accommodation units will not have year-long leases and presumably are not eligible for the SHI, the subsidized housing inventory. The project might be better permitted as a Mr. Cod mixed-use project, with up to 34 dwelling units allowed by Wright at 20 units per 40,000 square feet, and the remaining units being commercial accommodations. There would also be the proposed small restaurant. All of the dwelling units would be local action units, permanently restricted to be rentals, with year-long affordable rental leases. That is 100% affordable dwelling units, 34 of them. The dwelling units would be qualified for the SHI, that is Recorded Affordable Housing Regulatory Agreement, Monitoring Agreement, et cetera. The commercial accommodation units would be let, that is rented, on a monthly basis. I point out that the bylaw definition of commercial accommodations includes lodging houses and specifies monthly rentals are allowed. The permitting would be expedited. A Mr. Cod project does not require ZBA special permit. The application for the pending site plan review would be modified. The review can be completed quickly, subject to resolving parking issues. And the planning board in Mr. Cod has more flexibility regarding parking. I believe the pending site plan shows 57 parking spaces. Michael thinks that is sufficient. A 34-seat restaurant requires 17 spaces under the bylaw. Under Mr. Cod, each dwelling unit requires one space. That's, would be 34. Under Section 24014-1E of the recodified bylaw, each commercial accommodation unit requires 1.1 spaces, which would be 41. The number that's been used has been 88, just figuring one unit per commercial accommodation unit. The number comes to either 88 or 92, but Mr. Cod provides for a reduction where a car-sharing program is provided, and also where there is shared parking with commercial uses. There's also a broader statement in the Mr. Cod bylaw, which simply says that the planning board can reduce the parking requirement. Many of the residents and transient occupants will not have cars, and Michael is, in any case, working towards a parking arrangement with the abutting church, if the planning board feels that's necessary. I understand that the Cape Cod Commission has determined the project does not require DRI review, and that wouldn't change if the project is approved as a Mr. Cod mixed-use project, I presume. A mixed-use Mr. Cod development consisting of dwelling units and commercial accommodations and a small restaurant is permissible, as Mr. Cod broadly defines mixed-use development as, quote, "a development containing a mix of residential uses and non-residential uses, including without limitation, commercial, institutional, or other uses, as well as modifications to existing buildings," close quote. That's the end of the definition that's in Mr. Cod definitions. Commercial accommodations is not a residential use. By express zoning bylaw definitions, commercial accommodations are for transients, and dwelling units are for non-transient housing. See the Mr. Cod definitions of mixed-use development and multifamily dwelling. It's on page 24 of the bylaw. There's no reason a Mr. Cod mixed-use development cannot consist of a mix of dwelling units, commercial accommodation units, and a restaurant. And note that all of those are allowed uses in the business redevelopment district. So the main benefit of, that's the end of the letter, the main, and I can give you copies. The main benefit of doing this project under Mr. Cod is, certainly it's beneficial that, for the developer, that the permitting would be significantly expedited, and we wouldn't need to go to the Board of Appeals, where, and hopefully the Board of Appeals isn't listening, but the issuance of the special permit is not assured. The whole purpose of Mr. Cod was to avoid, one purpose, was to avoid the need for a special permit and to expedite permitting, and we think that this fits. In addition, with Mr. Cod, we're able to have 34 permanently restricted, 100% affordable residential units. I mean, that's what we want to have. And I think you have issues with what is commercial accommodations if, if it's for transients, and meanwhile, we have apartments that are being rented by the year, to people who are not transients. They should be residents. They should be qualified to vote, all the things that go along with living here. So that's the idea that, that we have, and some rationale, rationale for it. It doesn't change the fact that we need to be sure we have enough parking, and the planning board has to make that determination, but it does mean we get to avoid needing a special permit from the Board of Appeals to reduce parking, if that was our goal. And while we might be able to work out an agreement with the church, and I had a good conversation with the church's general counsel today, it, it might be something that we can, if we can put it into effect, see if we need it for a year or so, and then the planning board could waive it if we find that Michael is right, but he thinks we don't need it because of the nature of the occupancies, both for commercial accommodations and for tenancies. And again, Mr. Cod gives you all the flexibility that you need to reduce the parking, and we would hope that you would.
Did I hear it right? It's going to go from 64 units to 64 units from 71?
No.
No, I didn't hear it.
You did not hear that right. I don't think I used the word 64 at all.
I was just adding-
34.
Thirty and, thirty and 34 to give 64.
34 and 37. 34 residences-
Yeah.
Which is the result you get if you determine the number of acres, which is just about one and a half acres, and multiply. You do the multiplication of-
Right. If it's Mr. Cod, but wasn't the other number 30?
20 units per 20, per 40,000 square feet. The number comes to 34. So 34 are residential units, and 37-
37.
37 commercial accommodation units, a total of 71. It's the same plan. There are no changes whatsoever to the plan that's before you.
Ah, okay. I have the numbers wrong. Okay.
It's the exact same project. It's just, I think, permitted in a better way, for everybody, for the developer, for sure, for the town, for sure.
Okay, board comments. Pam?
I looked at the plan as drawn now, which was far more-
Thank you.
-detailed than what had previously been there. Would the interior be exactly as it is now, or would what you're proposing create a need for some redesign of the interior?
No, I don't think so, but I'm not sure of that. The, there are, as you know, one-bedroom apartments. There are studio apartments, and then there are rooms that include small kitchenette units. I think as long, and I'm not sure what the requirements are, Jed probably knows, for having the residential units qualify to, to, under the state regulations to be affordable housing. So that could affect whether we actually have 34, which is the maximum we can get under Mr. Cod, under our bylaw, whether we actually have 34 units that can be considered residential units. But we certainly have 34 proposed units that, that have a kitchen in it. You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'm not arguing that at all, and they would be interspersed within the building.
Right.
The commercial units, along with the apartments.
Right. We recently had some experience dealing with DHCD to get a regulatory agreement approved on a project that includes some affordable units and affordable units that are very separate. And that's the Woods Hole Lighthouse Station project, where you know we have four rental units, but we also- units, but we also have market rate-for-sale condominium units. And we have figured out a way to deal with that. The project is not the whole property. The project is just the affordable units, and I would think that we can work out the flexibility with DHCD to have a regulatory agreement that works for what we have here. The project would be the designated residential units, all those that can qualify. And again, I don't know if there are any out of thirty-four that couldn't.
Well, the reason I'm bringing this up is that I don't know what the laws are, but in regard to the commercial units, would each unit have to have an attached bathroom? Or can they be shared bathrooms, like for the bunk rooms that you have there? And I don't know. I'm just throwing this out.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure, but I believe, and Michael would know right off the bat, I'm sure, I believe there are thirty-four units which have en suite bathrooms that are, I think that works.
There appear to be.
Because a bunch of, a bunch of the single-room units do have their own bathroom.
I noticed that. That's why I'm throwing this out, because I don't know what the rules are.
Well, a dwelling unit obviously needs to be suitable for living, cooking, eating, and sleeping. That's the definition of dwelling unit. So.
But I like the idea, Bob.
What's that?
I do like the idea. Love to see it work.
Other comments? Paul, do you want to say anything now?
Not this time.
Not this time?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Okay.
You know, one of the issues that's kicking this into a problem with parking is the size of the restaurant.
Yeah.
Have you given consideration to reducing the number of people who be serving in this restaurant?
I have not. Again, I've, it just isn't something we've discussed, Michael and I, whether thirty-four is the number of seats there have to be to make it work, whether, actually, when I counted the seats on the plan, I only counted thirty shown on the plan. But, you know, I think in many cases, and it was actually an article in New York Times yesterday about this, our zoning in all communities is probably over-parking. There needs to be enough parking, no question about that. This isn't a situation where if there's, you know, you can park on the street. If there's not enough parking, there has to be enough parking irrespective of the zoning. Michael thinks that fifty-seven will work. If we can make an agreement with the church, we know we'll be okay, and we can, over a period of time, determine if we really need that. If we can't make that agreement with the church for any reason, then the reduction we're talking about from eighty-eight to fifty-seven, clearly with a ride-share agreement, the bylaw allows a reduction. It doesn't say how much a reduction. There are sections, there's a section of bylaw which talks about reducing up to fifty percent. This is less than fifty percent, the reduction that that would be. I, we probably should give you some more information about it if we can, but we have to ask the planning board to allow this project to go forward with the reduced parking. I mean, this, I think that the benefits of this project warrant that, and I think if we can, if this case is continued for two weeks, I think we can get some more answers about using Mr. Cod, and we'll have more information about the parking. And hopefully we could wrap this up pretty quickly, and if the planning board goes along with the, with using Mr. Cod, which I think my letter is very clear, I think, I strongly think that it works very well.
Let's get the questions out, because having a continuation for two weeks, we don't have the planning department's review complete. We're going to want that anyway.
Right.
So the two weeks isn't an issue, but I think this is a good time to get the questions and initial reactions out. John?
By the way it's presented, it looks like it fits exactly what is in the bylaw and the purpose of it.
It does, doesn't it? Bob?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Jim?
Oh, I do too. I just, actually, I think, I remember, as you remember, I objected to the parking because I brought up there was a five-year lease requirement, but it's been pointed out to me that that was left out of the new bylaw, so it no longer counts. So I'm a little hesitant about approving it because we made a mistake in the bylaw.
I don't know that it was a mistake.
Well, we, it was a substantial change. Do you think you deliberately took this section out of the bylaw?
I think that that needs to be looked into. I'm, I would thank you for the work that you've done.
Let me finish my point. I did, I was going to say, I believe it, I honestly believe it was a mistake. In fact, it's an errors and omissions that we've submitted tonight. Just let me finish. I think by doing it under Mr. Cod and just approving the reduction by the planning board's authority makes that a moot point and moves the thing forward, and then we don't have an issue anymore.
I should have let you finish.
I was just trying to get to the point that I was concerned about approving it because we made a mistake, but I think the door's been opened here to use Mr. Cod, which we wanted to give the planning board the chance to do it and solve the problem we could use going forward, as opposed to relying on an error that we really didn't mean, it just goes away this way, and it doesn't, it becomes moot if we approve it under the reduction. That's what I heard tonight. So that's my thoughts.
Pam, do you have any, any question or concern, a comment you want to make? Pam? I'll come back to you and ask you again.
Can you, can you hear me?
Now I can, yes.
Okay. So I, there's a delay between what you're talking, okay. So I, there's a delay between what you're.
Could you speak as close to the microphone as possible because you're fading out?
I, there's a delay between, could you speak as close to the microphone as possible because you're fading out?
She's on television, she can't do it.
How's this? Is this better?
Much better.
She needs to turn the TV off.
Can't hear you.
Can you?
No.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm just, I was.
She has her TV on, that's why it's not.
Yeah.
She's listening to your TV.
Turn the TV off.
Oh, Pam, could you shut your TV off? That might help.
Well, I'm just watching you.
Well, yeah.
Oh, no, no, we're not doing anything.
You can't do that.
We'd rather hear you.
Just listen.
Okay, how's that?
Better.
Okay. So my only concern is basically what Jim was talking about, and he was doing a very good job, for me, clarifying, so I'm okay.
You are. Okay, good. Anything else you want to add to that?
No.
I mean, okay, it covers a lot. Okay, I want to say, I think it's a very clever solution, and we have been completely entangled in our own rules trying to find a way to make this project work. And I, for one, would be really glad not to see the restaurant reduced. I think it's going to make that plaza that you're going to have in front of it livelier. It's going to be a better accommodation for the people using the facility, and it's a great project. And if this makes it possible, kudos to you two. So we'll see, because there's, I can see by Jed's face, there's many things we need to resolve.
Right. So there's a lot of open questions, as you may imagine, in that letter. I think it's important that staff have an opportunity to discuss this with town council's office, the building commissioner, before you get ahead of yourselves on deciding whether or not it actually could be a viable option. So we're, we would request a little bit more time to just make sure that we've reviewed it thoroughly and that we have the opportunity to respond to the requests as well.
Entirely reasonable. And the two, is the two weeks enough?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. In fact, in fact.
I have a question actually about process so far. I think you made a presentation last night to the select board, is that correct?
Yes.
How did it go?
They approved our request for a letter of support for some of the funding for the project.
Very positive.
And they're very enthusiastic about the project overall.
This is good. And did they hear the latest arrangement around the project to make it workable?
I just, as, thank you. As part of my presentation, I did mention to them that we were looking at some alternatives to the processing that we were going to go through, which might have a resolution, but that, I didn't get into a lot of the deal, details, as Bob has this evening. But they unanimously approved our request for a letter of support to Mass Development for a grant that we're going after for a million dollars. That's sort of the first step in our funding.
Excellent. Okay, I just really wondered about that. Thank you. So we'll, a process for a grant extension?
Well, so there's a couple of things. Is, I believe there may be members of the public who may want to speak on the public hearing, or perhaps the site plan review process. You may want to give them an opportunity. There's another point, just for point of clarification, on the site plan and the landscaping plan, and I wanted to just ask the applicant if I could have a moment. On the bus shelter, there appears to be two locations for that bus shelter, and so we'll just need to make sure that the, whichever location you decide on, that they match in the site plan and in the landscaping plan.
We'll get that corrected.
And just be cognizant of the building setback line on the site plan, so you cannot have a building or structure within a certain distance from the back of sidewalk, it appears. So just be cognizant of that when you're deciding on that bus shelter location. I think on the landscaping plan, you sort of get out of that distance, so it should be okay, but just take a closer look.
Okay. One of the nice things about Mr. Cod is the planning board specifically has the authority to reduce setback requirements that might come into play.
Right. And the flexibility that we have been searching for, there it is. So.
Perhaps.
If we have a code, we'll see if this, if the project is in Mr. Cod and it all fits. So we're looking forward to those answers, and I'm glad we can do it in two weeks. But I really, I give you credit for thinking of this. This is really good.
I appreciate your time, staff's time for working on this project. I know we've been a little bit of a headache, but it's a unique project that I think is very important for the community, so thank you for your time, and we look forward to coming back in two weeks.
Well, and for your, your resolution of all of these items that have been outstanding. So you've been working hard on it also.
Did you want to offer the opportunity for public comment?
Yes. Anyone else who wishes to speak on this?
My name is Bill Enos. I've been in the community here since nineteen sixty-two. I've been in the store across from the 545 location for thirty-five years. I was there when the tractor trailers were in and out of that place, tying up the roads. I don't know if you're aware, but behind the Walgreens, we have assistant living. And again, I might want to make it clear, I'm all for assistant living in the right place. This is not the right place. This is not the characteristic of Falmouth. We also have that red building, the old phase, I don't know if you're all aware, that's, that I understand is in court now fighting to be housing, low-income housing there as well. We have low-income housing behind Dunkin' Donuts. They got tractor trailers in there, they got tractor trailers across the street. It's a disaster trying to get out of my store, in and out. And low-income housing, I mean, who's going to be interviewing these people, and you're talking about commercial, commercial buildings, if I heard correctly, which I didn't get any of that correspondence, which I'd like to get a copy of, that's going to be by.
We have an extra copy here. They went down, yeah, I think they came down to you, John.
I'm going to obviously have to talk to my attorney, but I just, the thing is, is that there's no way you're going to have room enough for all these Cots. And I already talked to some of the people at the church as well, and they're like, hey, we don't want to be, we're no liability. What if somebody gets hurt over there? Now they're going to be liable. So there's a lot of things. I don't think it's, it's, it's a, sounds like a great idea. It is a great idea if you have the right place. There's a hundred and sixty parking spots on Main Street from the fire station, never mind up near the Peking Palace, never mind the parking lots, the parking you have to the right of the library, to the left of the library, never mind this parking lot out here. You have the parking. You have these restaurants that have parking behind it. I heard you say, Mrs. Harris, that you were, you were allowing it down on Main Street now. Yeah, but they have parking there. They have parking here. You don't have the parking there. I invite you all, come sit in my store for one day and watch the traffic stop, we got the buses stop. It's, it's a disaster there, and you're killing the beauty of this town with all these big, big buildings. Enough is enough. These buildings need to be out in Hatchville, 151, out in that area. We don't have room for that, in that location. It's a bad idea.
I wonder if you're understanding the project. This building is already there.
I understand the building's there, but not for a hundred and seventy-six parking spots. I mean, you can't assume that I'm not going to have a companion living in a, in a unit with me, and you can't assume that I'm going to, you know, be taking public transportation. We don't really have adequate public transportation. So I'm just thinking, I mean, like I said, if I could get a copy of the correspondence, I will talk to my attorney and have reputation for him be here next time.
I'm outside, I read it.
Thank you. Here's a copy for you right now, and I understand that you're concerned.
Yes, ma'am.
I think I've been in your store.
I'm sorry?
I think I've been in your store.
I think you have.
Right.
Come sit there for a day and just see, like you said, it's terrible, you try to get in and out of it, it's, it's a mess.
Mm-huh. So, before an extension?
So I'm assuming you're going to continue the public hearing?
Yes.
On the special permit? If you'd like to extend them for a two-week period, your next meeting would be June thirteenth.
Do we have to move that and vote it?
Yes, please.
I move that we extend the hearing, the special permit hearing, until June thirteenth.
Would you like to also extend the site plan review to June thirteenth?
Absolutely. I should have spoken both in the same breath. Sorry.
Could we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
With your permission.
Aye.
There you are.
With your permission, we will reach out to the applicant and also ask for an extension of the deadline decision for the site plan review.
Uh, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So this, there's more work to be done, but it's, it's moving, and that's really good news. Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, I think that completes the meeting part of our agenda. Now we're moving to planning board discussion items, and we have four of them, and one of them, the planning department report, will include more than, more than just one item. So let's begin with, I'm down on to solar in Falmouth. Paul, is that you?
I guess it is. I requested that we.
Right.
Have staff prepare a list of the solar panel projects in Falmouth, both proposed and built. And I gave an outline and whatnot, and I think this is a good start. I thought there were a lot more than this. It'd be nice to know the capacity of these units as well, which is what we're talking about. We know how big these things are. The one at Tech Park is huge, and I don't know how big that is, because it seems to have several parts to it. So I think we can just complete this a little bit more with a little more detail, if we can get that.
I can't, I don't have a file.
It should be easy to get EDIC, year permitted, and information on that, because Jim knows that.
I'm out of date. I haven't been on the EDIC for a while.
You know when it was permitted, you know what it was permitted for.
Well, I actually know what the projections were. I'd actually like to see, I had projected it be generating around six hundred thousand dollars a year with no investment to town by this year. I'd like to see if it's actually done that. That would be a pretty nice number to hear.
What is the, how do you measure capacity? What, and are you talking about kilowatts or something? What?
Well, the size of the, it's all about, the size of the array.
And how many arrays?
How many and how big they are. That's part of the application process. It should be there.
Ah, okay. I just didn't know how you measured it.
You know, they say how many they're going to put in, what they expect to do, and everything else, and that's part of the process. So it's just a matter of pulling it out with them.
Okay, did you want to, just for the sake of FCTV, did you want to read these five addresses, these five installations? I think it's interesting. There's one at nine Technology Park Drive, one at Blacksmith Shop Road and Thomas Landers Road by Falmouth EDIC, one, another at Blacksmith Shop Road 459, Borrego Solar, the fourth one, 1220 Nathan Ellis Highway, and then the last one, 769 East Falmouth Highway at Kenyon's Market. So so far, those are the commercial solar arrays. Would that be their category?
Yes. I thought there were more, but that's fine.
Guess that's it. Okay, zoning bylaw review. Jim has put in quite a bit of work on this. Do you want to talk to this?
Well, to be honest with you, I was actually assisted by Bob. I meant to put this together.
Well, that's okay.
Was it, was it me? I, I had talked to him about it, and I have a vague memory of things, and lawyers can put it in such precise terms, it's much better.
Yes, it is better. Did he volunteer to do that?
He did. He did. We had discussed a few loose items, and he made a great list. And Jed's been working on it. I think, what do you think, Jed? If we go piece, one by one, just go through it and see what we want, how, what interaction we want to do?
I think you can. I, I think you can. So, um, in addition to what Jim provided, I provided the board with the ongoing list of items that either we have found as the, in the planning department, or, um, actually, Attorney Amen's been sending us, um, things along the way as well. And so we've just kept a running list.
This is a compilation of both, right? That's what this is?
That's correct.
Okay, so this isn't all me, all right? I have a very small piece of this.
Yeah.
Jed did this work.
And, you know-
So Bob, Jed, Jim, they've all worked on it.
Yep, three of us, we all worked on it.
And it's all going to the subcommittee for recodifica-, well, it shouldn't be called recodification anymore.
We're working on a new name.
Okay, we'll have a new name soon, but we know who's on that committee, and they're meeting, I believe, tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yes.
Right, so it's gonna land immediately. Did you want to name the sections?
Well, I, I just wanted to point out, the ones that actually changed the use for the business zoning has been really difficult for me as a real estate professional to do, because I had an idea of what we could do in our town, and then we were, we made a bylaw change that wasn't supposed to change anything, and all of a sudden, a lot of things got changed that we didn't know about.
Right.
So if you could put them all back, I'd be very happy.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it? Could I, could I just add to that? By putting a lot of things into a matrix, we put hard lines between things, and they didn't used to have hard lines.
I know, and that's the problem. There's a lot of gray areas, in other words, in interpretation, and you're, what you tried to do was very, very, very difficult. And that's why, for all the time I was chairman, I refused to do the job, because it was, it was too hard.
Well, we're just blundering through it, but we're, this helps, and it, we had not even been aware of the hard line issue of the matrix till you pointed it out, so thank you.
Well, they, they started popping up when you go in and talk to the building department, and somebody pulls out a report, it's not in there anymore, and you go, oh my God, I've been doing this for years, what happened?
Yeah.
And that's, that's really the gist of the nuances that happened to me several times since we changed the bylaw. I didn't know they were there, they were, it's because we had, it also happened because we had a new town planner, a new building inspector, we didn't have Brian, we didn't have Aladio Gore, so all this institutional knowledge went down the road, and they pulled out a form, and they went by that. And it created, it really has been difficult to deal with. But that's what-
It has, but, but we're almost there.
No, you do, keep going.
We're almost there. And what we have here, just for people on FCTV, we've got nine, actually, we have two nines and two eights, so we've got more than that.
Well, look at that, huh?
At least ten or twelve errors and omissions that have been brought to us, and will go to the committee. So our thanks to you, Bob Amen, and to, to Jed, of course.
Planning staff, it's not all me. We all work together, and-
Melinda, Michaela.
Absolutely. And to Jim's point, we typically will find these things when someone comes into the office and says, you know, I want to try to do this, and we look at our books, and we say, gosh, you know, we thought this was allowed. And then, you know, it may just be a simple typographic error, or it may be something that was just missed. Um, and so anytime we find that, maybe we're perusing the bylaw, and we're just spending, uh, you know, a quiet Saturday afternoon, just reading section 9.7, and we find an error, we write it down. So it's been a, it's been a process.
Yeah.
There, there was a really serious one, uh, within the tech park, and I was really thinking I was in a big bit of trouble, because I had done something that was no longer allowed. And I sat down with Michaela, and she probably spent an hour with me, or maybe an hour and a half, and she found another word that meant the same thing, and solved the problem, and it went away. It was like, mixed use or multiple use.
Oh.
The, the changes, remember, we argued once, and you told me, mixed use isn't allowed anymore. I said, it's gotta be, it's all over the place, and I couldn't find it. She sat down, we went word for word for word, and all of a sudden, she found this language that said, or, any other multiple use that could normally done, be done in the town, and it solved the problem, I gave it to the attorneys, and the issue went away.
Went away, right.
So it's great, this, she really dug, dug in big, and that, that was the one that really got me worried.
You know, I've got a comment to make, though. Having proofread multiple reports, multiple times, and I go back 10 years later, and I thought, how could we have missed that one? We're going to be doing the same thing, it doesn't matter how much we think we've caught everything. Year after year, we will catch something else.
I proofread this document several times, and you just caught that there were two eights and two nines, and I missed it.
Really?
It is what it is.
Shame on you.
Nobody bats a thousand.
Shame on you. Yeah.
So it's, it's a team effort.
Yeah.
As long as we endeavor to correct every mistake we find, we'll be okay.
Right, I'm just wondering, with every mistake that we apparently will be finding for years, do we then have to go back to town meeting to correct each one?
Yes, ma'am.
We do.
Yes.
So we'll always have like a, a little handful of old business.
Yep. And as the work-
It'll get smaller.
Yeah.
Yes, likely that, that pile will become smaller and smaller.
Memories will get dimmer.
And-
That's certain typos, though, that are obvious, instead of the word is, you've got if in there that it can just be corrected without going to tell me.
You have to wonder, if you ran it through artificial intelligence, would it pick them all up now?
I don't know.
Yeah.
It's a good idea, you should give it a try.
Yeah, right.
Have you tried those?
I use it, but I do it all the time.
Do you? They're very fun to play with. Well, that's not our business. So, then we have, are we done with that one?
Uh, if, if you're done, and I, I would just say lastly, you know, a, a thank you to anyone who sends in these, this information to us, because it's helpful. I'm, I'm bringing it forward in these recodification working group meetings and discussing it as a group, so.
Good. Okay, committee reports. No, 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 no committees? All? No, no committees? No committee reports. Planning board report. We were going to hear, um, where we are getting to 10%.
Excuse me. So, um, thank you for reminding me. The SHI list, as you may be aware, is likely to change very soon. Uh, and the reason for that is because the state is releasing, um, year-round housing unit numbers by the end of the month. So that calculation, that denominator in the, in the, you know, in the formula, is, is about to change on us. So we, we know we're in the area of 8%, just under 8% for, um, year-round affordable units within the town, but we're likely to see that number change anytime soon. Excuse me, I apparently have something in my throat that I can't-
I quite can't.
-free myself of.
Are we anywhere close to safe harbor?
Uh, not that I'm aware of, no.
But the housing production plan could save us for two years with a simple approval of a couple of projects in the pipeline, is that correct?
Potentially, yes. If those projects come to fruition.
Oh, that's a big if?
Well, no, actually, th- these 30 here and Kimco, I think the num-, I see it coming.
Again, it, they would have to-
But did they have to have actually gotten here and been built?
I think they just get it approved.
They have to be approved within a certain period of time of each other, right? So they have to be approved within a year of each other, otherwise they don't count, so if-
Or they go into another year.
Again, it would have to be, it would have to, things would have to line up correctly in order to, yes, achieve safe harbor. It's possible, yes.
They go by fiscal year or calendar year?
I believe it's calendar year. But the expert in that field is our housing coordinator, Kim Fish, so we can circle back with her, but she has just reminded me to just remind everyone that it's not that we're trying to hide the number, it's just that the number's about to change any day now, and the last thing we want to be doing is reporting a number that then changes, you know.
Is Paul's garage project completely gone?
I don't have any more information on that, so I don't, I don't know.
Uh, okay, so that's, that's where we are. The rest of your report?
Yeah, I just want to, um, recodification. So our working group meetings, um, you know, just to sort of come back to that, all of those meetings are listed, or are posted on FCTV's webpage, they're also on FCTV's YouTube channel. So if anyone out there who's listening tonight wants to learn more about what's being discussed during the recodification, or during the second phase of our working group sessions, can do so by just going on, online and, and accessing those videos.
And the videos are made from the Zoom?
Yes.
Because we're meeting on Zoom, the Zoom, right, the Zoom records it.
Yep, every, every meeting we record, now we post it, so, you know, we're not trying to keep any secrets, everything is public, and, you know, you'll be seeing a lot of changes potentially coming in November for the full town meeting, because we've got to be cleaning up some things.
Right.
So-
So, you're, they're all on YouTube?
Correct. FCTV YouTube's channel, yeah, yep.
Right.
I just have a question. This document you prepared on the references by law provisions?
That was-
Was that staff prepared? Who prepared it? There's no attribution on this.
I believe Attorney Amen prepared that.
Okay, because we should say, who prepared it?
We just gave it the same way we received it.
So this was Attorney Amen?
Yes.
Well, it actually apparently was the work of several people.
He's worked hard on it.
Yeah, and, and like I said, we appreciate that, because-
He's been very helpful.
You know, you look at things the same way every day, and you miss things that you, that someone else might pick up the first time they review it, so it's important.
No, doesn't work that way.
Is there anything further to report?
Uh, just the items that I've got in, in that summary. So Shiverick's Pond, Paul, we, we finished up, I believe, our Conservation Commission Notice of Intent hearings with the, um, with the Conservation Commission, so the next step will be filing a Chapter 91 license application, so that project's moving ahead. That's the viewing platform in the fishing pier. Last night, Kim Fish and I were at the select board meeting, and we presented the updated master plan for the Emerald Properties project. That is an initiative to do the all-inclusive, multi-generational play space and potentially affordable housing on 67 Davisville Road and 81 Davisville Road. So we presented an updated master plan, and, um, the select board approved us moving forward once again, because we, we had to come back to them, because there was an error in the first conceptual plan, so we had to have that rectified, come back, we're ready to launch forward into civic engagement, so that was exciting. And as you may remember, we reported to you folks that we were, the planning department is submitting an application to the One Stop for Growth Grant Program for a downtown management plan, or downtown parking management plan, um, and we'll be submitting that by the end of the week. So we're excited to get that underway.
So anything that you can share about, uh, what they're proposing, or what, uh, for downtown parking?
So, the, the, the purpose of the study, it's a, it's a study to identify the utilization of all of our downtown lots.
Yeah.
Right, so to gather data about how those parking lots are being used, and we're hoping to have data collection happen in the summer, on a weekday, and then on a weekend, and we can get some hard data about how long people are staying, is it overutilized, is it underutilized, how many people are parking, et cetera. Because then that folds into, well then, how do we make improvements, if necessary, to the downtown parking area? Because as of right now, we really don't have any data as to who's parking it for how long.
Is any consideration in, in that kind of a concern given, to the thought that it's seasonal? This is really a seasonal problem, and if we were to have enough parking for everybody in the summer, in the winter, we could be surrounded by a sea of asphalt.
True, yeah, i- if you, if you were to improve to accommodate the summer traffic, absolutely, yeah. Yes, to answer your question is yes, of course we would consider that, yes.
Yeah, and there needs to be a balance.
Yeah, yeah.
The other thing that I think you have to be careful about is when they would schedule it, because over the July 4th weekend, we have people coming here from all over the place, so they can see the fireworks, and of course, there's road rides.
Right.
And I, I don't know how you want to incorporate that, or make sure that it doesn't occur then, to be a picture of the summer parking.
Right, right. So part of the grant application process is that we would then, if awarded the money, we would then be, um, given a consultant, that consultant does this type of work as a profession, and so we would work with them to devise a data collection program that would make sense, right? So we wouldn't be collecting on the busiest day of the, of planet Earth, right? That wouldn't make sense, but we would have some sort of happy medium there.
Well, because you have, have the data, rather than just continuing anecdotes about the problem.
Exactly.
Right. Okay, if we've come to the end of our planning board discussion items, we're-
What was that, though? That was tucked in here?
Oh, the correspondence? I thought we were going to do the, um, planning board reorganization at the, okay. Is that where you put it?
Yeah, wherever we want to put it.
We could do it now.
We can do it now.
Okay, so-
Reorganization.
Planning board reorganization. Right, this is to choose our officers for the coming year, now that we've had an election. I want to first say, it's kind of election, it's really nice for our board, everybody's still here, so that was good.
Well, I would like to nominate Charlotte to continue as our chairman for the coming year. I think she's done an exemplary job of representing our board at town meeting and other instances, and I'd like to see her continue. To be able to do that, if you would concur with that, we have to, uh, vote-
To waive the policy.
To waive the policy of the two years, two consecutive years. So I would need a motion to that effect.
I move, we waive the policy.
I'll second that.
Waive it two or three times for me, so.
Yeah, I know, and for me too, and for Ken Foreman, and, no, so, um, okay, so as we moved and seconded it.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pam?
Pam? Are you with us?
I am, and aye.
Aye, thank you.
Aye.
Okay, and so the motion is in effect then, to nominate Charlotte for continuing chairmanship.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Pam?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
I would like to nominate Pat to continue on as the vice chair. She's done a wonderful job, and she's essential.
I think it's real important that you guys finish the recodification. It's to change the leader in the middle of that exercise. You're going to, you're in the, you got to finish it.
Because he doesn't want any part of it.
I was going to make disparaging remarks about our committee meetings. They really are tough.
Well, it's hard. I mean, I don't, I don't even know how you do it. It's so hard.
Oh, the consultants. Absolutely.
And we can do it without.
Get it done.
Okay, and I'd like to nominate Paul to continue as clerk.
Second.
And he's got nothing to say.
I'll take that as an acceptance of the nomination. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Did we vote on Pat?
Yep.
Okay. We are reorganized. Are there any announcements? Hearing none? General correspondence? Seeing none?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We got this, remember? That's what brought that along.
Oh, no, we didn't.
I don't know what that is.
Okay, this is from the Cape Cod Commission.
I know.
Certified mail. What?
Went to Mike Forman.
Please find a copy of the development of region, not regional impact decision for community reliability project. I'm not familiar with this. We'll have to take a look at this before our next meeting.
I think Jed's got something to say maybe about it.
Do you want to talk about this?
I wasn't planning on talking about that. Just summarizing the fact that it's a DRI decision for the board's edification. So it's just something that you should review. It's related to that electricity project for Martha's Vineyard, the new cable that they're laying.
Oh, the one down by Surf Drive, right?
Correct.
Right. Okay.
We missed an announcement, if I could do that.
Oh, of course you can. Go ahead.
This, Housing Call to Action: Residents Need to Speak Up for Housing. It's Wednesday, June 7th, 8:00 to 9:30 a.m. in the Herman Room at Falmouth Library, 300 Main Street.
Who's putting that on?
Housing to Protect Cape Cod. Guest speaker includes Alyssa Magnata, CEO of Housing Assistance, Tucker Holland, Municipal Housing Director, Nan Tuckett, Leslie Sandberg, Select Board Province Town. And I think that covers it.
And then there'll be some panel discussions from members of the town.
Yeah. Tim Smith, Fire and Rescue, Peter McConady, DPW, Laurie Durr, Superintendent of the Schools, Peter Spears, COO Marine Biological Lab, Deb McGuire, Honor of Liam's Irish Pub, and Carter Hunt, CEO, Falmouth Hospital.
That's pretty distinguished.
It's free event with refreshments and raffles, so.
Pam, did you hear those dates? Are you familiar with this?
Could you repeat those dates?
It's only Wednesday.
Wednesday, June 7th.
8:00 to 9:00 p.m., 9:30 a.m.
We can send to the fire.
Yeah. All right, the fire in the planning office, I would suppose.
Yeah, absolutely. It's not only in the planning office, it's hung up throughout town hall. Hopefully, FCTV's getting it right now. It's up on the screen.
Oh, okay, good. Very good.
Free event. We encourage anyone who's got input on housing in town to come and have their voice heard.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Okay. Future agenda items. Is the business coming in? Anything else? Our next meeting is June 13th, 2023, and we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Very much.